Well, good evening again. Welcome to the continuation of the county council's work for this evening. At this point, if you have any devices that make any noise, ring, beep, chirp, whatever, would you please make sure that they are turned off? We'd appreciate that. And this is the council's regular legislative session, at which we will introduce new legislation and give final consideration to legislation introduced in April. The council will hold a public hearing on legislation introduced tonight, on Monday, May 18th, at 7:30 here in the Banneker Room. Because the council is considering the proposed FY16 budget this month, there will be several additional hearings and work sessions related to the budget in the next couple of weeks. On Wednesday, May 6th, at 8:30 in the morning, the council will hold an operating budget work session on public safety and public facilities, which will be held in the C. Vernon Gray Conference Room. On Monday, May 11th, at 9:30 a.m., the council will hold an operating budget work session on general government and community services, which will be held also in the C. Vernon Gray Conference Room. Later in the day, on May 11th, at 1 o'clock, the council will hold a public hearing on the proposed FY16 capital and operating budgets here in the Banneker Room. Then on Tuesday, May 12th, at 7:00 p.m., the council will hold a public hearing on education here in the Banneker Room. This will include both capital and operating budgets for schools, libraries, and the community college. If that isn't enough, we have a complete schedule of our deliberations on our website, as well as in the back of the room, on a nice bright green piece of paper, if you want to take one home with you and keep track of how we're doing. We would appreciate that. All right, we will begin this evening with approval of our meeting minutes. So I'm going to move approval of the journal for April 6th, 2015.
Second.
Ms. Siggety.
Yes.
Dr. Ball.
Yes.
Mr. Fox.
Yes.
Ms. Tarassa.
Yes.
Mr. Weinstein.
Yes.
Move approval of the following minutes. The month, our minutes for our monthly meeting on April 13th, 2015, the capital budget hearing that we held on April 16th, 2015, our closed meeting of April 16th, 2015, the capital budget work session of April 20th, 2015, the legislative public hearing of April 20th, 2015, the legislative work session of April 27th, 2015, our operating budget public hearing of April 29th, 2015, and our operating budget work session of April 30th, 2015.
Second.
Ms. Siggety.
Yes.
Dr. Ball.
Yes.
Mr. Fox.
Yes.
Ms. Tarassa.
Yes.
Mr. Weinstein.
Yes.
At this point, I would like to move to allow the introduction of a resolution that was not prefiled. That would be Council Resolution 87, 2015, calling the council into legislative session later in this month.
Second.
Ms. Siggety.
Yes.
Dr. Ball.
Yes.
Mr. Fox.
Yes.
Ms. Tarassa.
Yes.
Mr. Weinstein.
Yes.
Because May is taken up with budget legislation, we will be postponing introduction of many of the month, this month's prefiled legislation until June. A complete list of the deferred legislation can be seen on the council's website under prefiled legislation. So any, some of the bills will move forward as current legislation, and some will remain and be introduced in June. Ms. Feldmark, if you would, please read the legislation for May introduction.
The following legislation is introduced by the chairperson at the request of the county executive unless otherwise noted. Council Resolution 45, 2015, a resolution confirming the appointment of Gary W. Cook as county solicitor. Council Resolution 66, 2015, introduced by the chairperson at the request of the Board of Education, a resolution approving certain transfers between major categories of the Howard County Board of Education operating budget for fiscal year 2015, transferring $1,800,000 to the operation of plant category and transferring $2,500,000 to the fixed charges category. Council Bill 16, 2015, an act amending the annual budget and appropriation ordinance for fiscal year 2015 by transferring $900,000 from the Department of Police to the Department of Public Works to account for increased costs for snow removal. Council Bill 17, 2015, introduced by Calvin Ball, an act requiring that healthy food and beverage options be provided on certain county properties and for certain county programs under certain conditions, establishing standards for healthy food and beverages in connection with these requirements, providing exemptions for these requirements, establishing certain requirements on placement, pricing, advertising, and marketing of food and beverages in relation to these requirements, establishing certain duties for the Office of Purchasing in relation to these requirements, and generally relating to healthy food and beverages. Council Bill 18, 2015, an act amending Plan Howard 2030, the general plan for Howard County, to include Patapsco Heritage Area Management Plan, and recognizing that the plan is a way to further opportunities for recreation, environmental, and historic conservation and heritage tourism, and to support economic development and generally relating to planning and zoning and land use in Howard County. Council Bill 19, 2015, an act pursuant to Section 612 of the Howard County Charter approving a second amendment to lease agreement between Howard County, Maryland, and L.S. O.P. 3-MD3 LLC for the lease of space located at 9770 Patuxent Woods Drive, Columbia, Maryland, and authorizing the county executive to take certain actions in connection with the agreement. Council Resolution 87, 2015, introduced by the chairperson, a resolution calling the County Council of Howard County, Maryland into legislative session on May 22nd, 2015, May 26th, 2015, and May 28th, 2015. Council Bill 20, 2015, an act amending the pay plan for Howard County, providing pay scales for employees, providing certain specialty pays, and making certain technical corrections, providing for the application of this act, and generally relating to the pay plan for Howard County. Council Bill 21, 2015, an act amending the classification plan for Howard County, amending and adding certain class descriptions, providing for the application of this act, and generally relating to amendments to the Howard County Classification Plan. Council Bill 22, 2015, an act correcting the county code by providing that the county executive is the appointing authority for the position of executive assistant two, consistent with the existing classification plan, and generally relating to human resources provisions in the Howard County Code. Council Bill 23, 2015, an act adopting the current expense budget and the capital budget for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2015, and ending June 30, 2016, to be known as the annual budget and appropriation ordinance of Howard County fiscal year 2016. Council Bill 24, 2015, an act for the purpose of authorizing and empowering Howard County, Maryland to borrow money in the principal amount of up to $127,126,691 on its full faith and credit and issue and sell its bonds or other obligations therefore to be used to pay costs of certain county capital projects, including bridge projects, general county projects, storm drainage projects, school system projects, fire and rescue projects, road resurfacing projects, road construction projects, roadside and sidewalk projects, library projects, community college projects, parks and recreation projects, police projects, sewer projects, and traffic improvement projects, which are specified and described in the county's 2016 capital budget, including without limitation borrowings for certain capital projects previously authorized in other calendar years, which such authorization has lapsed or will lapse, and to pay costs of issuance of such bonds or other obligations, authorizing the county to issue bond anticipation notes, or to enter into installment purchase agreements for payment of portions of such costs, and to levy taxes upon the assessable property within the county sufficient, together with other funds available, to pay the debt service on such obligations, and providing for and determining various matters in connection therewith. Council Bill 25, 2015, an act for the purpose of authorizing and empowering Howard County, Maryland to borrow money in the principal amount of up to $134,446,000 on its full faith and credit and issue and sell its bonds or other obligations therefore to be used to pay costs of certain county water and sewer capital projects, which are specified and described in the county's 2016 capital budget, including without limitation borrowing for certain water and sewer capital projects previously authorized in prior calendar years with such authorization has lapsed or will lapse, and to pay costs of issuance of such bonds or other obligations, authorizing the county to issue bond anticipation notes or to enter into installment purchase agreements for payment of portions of such costs, and to levy taxes upon the assessable property within the county sufficient, together with benefit assessments, ad valorem taxes upon the, levied upon the assessable property in the Metropolitan District and other available funds to pay the debt service on such obligations, and providing for and determining various matters in connection therewith. Council Bill 26, 2015, an act for the purpose of authorizing and empowering Howard County, Maryland to borrow money in a principal amount of up to $16,943,124 on its full faith and credit and issue and sell bonds or other obligations therefore to be used to pay costs of certain county road construction projects, which are specified and described in the county's 2016 capital budget, including without limitation borrowings for such capital projects previously authorized, and to pay costs of issuance of such bonds or other obligations, authoring, authorizing and empowering the county to issue bond anticipation notes, or to enter into installment purchase agreements for payment of portions of such costs, and to levy taxes upon the assessable property within the county sufficient, together with building excise taxes and other available funds to pay the debt service on such obligations, and providing for and determining various matters in connection therewith. Council Resolution 70, 2015, a resolution approving the capital program for Howard County for fiscal years 2017 through 2021, and the extended capital program for fiscal years 2022 through 2025. Council Resolution 71, 2015, a resolution approving the fiscal year 2016 operating budget for the Howard Community College and indicating appropriations for major functional categories. Council Resolution 72, 2015, a resolution approving the fiscal year 2016 budget for the Howard County Library System and indicating appropriations for object classes. Resolution 73, 2015, a resolution setting forth the fiscal year 2016 operating budget for the Howard County Board of Education. Council Resolution 74, 2015, a resolution approving the fiscal year 2016 budget for the Howard County Health Department and indicating appropriations for object classes. Council Resolution 75, 2015, a resolution approving schedules for charges pertaining to the Metropolitan District to water and sewer service and to shared sewage disposal facilities. Council Resolution 76, 2015, a resolution approving the schedule of fees for the functions regulated by the Department of Public Works. Council Resolution 77, 2015, a resolution approving schedule of fees, fines, and charges for functions regulated by the Howard County Department of Inspections, Licenses, and Permits. Council Resolution 78, 2015, a resolution approving the schedule of fees and charges for functions regulated or administered by the Department of Planning and Zoning. Council Resolution 79, 2015, a resolution approving schedules of fees and rates for functions regulated and administered by the Department of Police. Council Resolution 80, 2015, a resolution approving fee and rate schedules for applying for approval of an industrial development revenue bond or MIDFA bond or loan, solicitor and peddler identification card, weekend prisoner's room and board, prisoner healthcare provider fee, participation in work release program, participation in home detention program, marriage license fee charge for funding of domestic violence programs, annual registration of trespass towing companies, and maximum rates to be charged by trespass towing services, fee and specifications for transcripts of administrative proceedings, and reproduction of public records. Council Resolution 81, 2015, a resolution levying a tax on certain admissions and amusements, establishing classes of admissions and amusements, setting tax rates on different classes, and providing for certain exemptions from the tax. Council Resolution 82, 2015, a resolution establishing a recordation tax on instruments of writing that are recorded with the clerk of the circuit court. Council Resolution 83, 2015, a resolution adopting the schedule of rates for the building excise tax. Council Resolution 84, 2015, a resolution levying fire and rescue taxes beginning July 1, 2015. Council Resolution 85, 2015, a resolution levying a property tax for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2015, and ending June 30, 2016, setting the tax rates for property and providing for the collection of the property tax. Council Resolution 86, 2015, a resolution setting the fee and lieu rate for moderate income housing.
Thank you, Ms. Feldmark. I think that is the longest and largest introduction, certainly, of bills you've had to do up until now, and it always surprises me every year when we get to the budget, how many bills there actually are that make up the budget. So we appreciate it. Now, move to allow reading of bills by short title this evening on the third reading.
Second.
Ms. Siggety.
Yes.
Dr. Ball.
Yes.
Mr. Fox.
Yes.
Ms. Tarassa.
Yes.
Mr. Weinstein.
Yes.
Ms. Feldmark, would you please read the legislation for final consideration, beginning with the appointments that are on the consent agenda?
Council Resolution 24, 2015, confirming the appointment of Sherri Banks to the Board to promote self-sufficiency. Council Resolution 25, 2015, confirming the appointment of James W. Brown to the State Agricultural Preservation Advisory Board and the Howard County Agricultural Land Preservation Board. Council Resolution 26, 2015, confirming the appointment of Allison Buckley to the Howard County Commission for Veterans and Military Families. Council Resolution 27, 2015, confirming the appointment of Alice S. Giles to the Public Transportation Board. Council Resolution 28, 2015, confirming the appointment of Robert M. Gillette to the Howard County Commission for Veterans and Military Families. Council Resolution 31, 2015, confirming the appointment of Dorothy L. Moore to the Cemetery Preservation Advisory Board. Council Resolution 32, 2015, confirming the appointment of Deborah R. Rivkin to the Board of Health. Council Resolution 33, 2015, confirming the appointment of Erica Rose Zorin to the Historic Preservation Commission. Council Resolution 34, 2015, confirming the reappointment of Dr. Chen Shi Chang to the Environmental Sustainability Board. Council Resolution 35, 2015, confirming the reappointment of Jay Chong to the Personnel Board. Council Resolution 36, 2015, confirming the reappointment of Georgia L. Ecker to the Environmental Sustainability Board. Council Resolution 37, 2015, confirming the reappointment of Deborah Jean Fleishman to the Commission on Aging. Council Resolution 38, 2015, confirming the reappointment of Ashlyn Hood to the Advisory Board on Consumer Affairs. Council Resolution 39, 2015, confirming the reappointment of Shahan Rizvi to the Equal Business Opportunity Commission.
Thank you. So move, move approval of the items that are on our consent agenda. Council Resolutions 24, 25, 26, 27, 28, 31, 32, 33, 34, 35, 36, 37, 38, and 39, 2015.
Second.
Ms. Siggety.
Yes.
Dr. Ball.
Yes.
Mr. Fox.
Thank you for being here, Mr. Gillette. It's nice to see you. Not, not too often we get people coming out for their votes, but with that, yes, very nice that everybody's out here. Hello. And with that, yes.
Ms. Tarassa.
Yes.
Mr. Weinstein.
Yes.
Council Resolution 29, 2015, confirming the appointment of Kimberly A. Hartman to the Howard County Local Children's Board.
Move to table Council Resolution 29, 2015. As you recall, Ms. Hartman was unable to attend our public hearing at the last one, so...
Second.
Ms. Siggety.
Yes.
Dr. Ball.
Yes.
Mr. Fox.
Yes.
Ms. Tarassa.
Yes.
Mr. Weinstein.
Yes.
Council Resolution 30, 2015, confirming the appointment of Robert Knudsen to the Historic Preservation Commission.
Move to withdraw Council Resolution 30, 2015, upon the request of Mr. Knudsen.
Second.
Ms. Siggety.
Yes.
Dr. Ball.
Yes.
Mr. Fox.
Yes.
Ms. Tarassa.
Yes.
Mr. Weinstein.
Yes.
SAO 7, 2015, transferring $33,600 from the Grants Fund Contingency Reserve to the Department of Public Works.
Move approval of SAO 7, fiscal year 2015.
Second.
Ms. Siggety.
Yes.
Dr. Ball.
Yes.
Mr. Fox.
Yes.
Ms. Tarassa.
Yes.
Mr. Weinstein.
Yes.
SAO 8, 2015, transferring $1,845,828 from the Grants Fund Contingency Reserve to the Office of Transportation.
Move approval of SAO 8 on FY 2015.
Second.
Move approval of Amendment 1 to SAO 7 FY 2015.
Second.
Ms. Seager.
Are you referring to SAO 8?
I'm sorry, SAO 8. I misread it. Did I say SAO 7? Oh, no, I mistyped it.
Okay.
I had it 8 once, and then I wrote 7 by accident. So I really meant approve Amendment 1 to SAO 8, yes.
Okay, great. Amendment 1 just clarifies the use of funds that are currently in the revenue, program revenue fund. Okay. Any questions for Ms. Seager on that?
Ms. Siggety.
Yes.
Dr. Ball.
Yes.
Mr. Fox.
Yes.
Ms. Tarassa.
Yes.
Mr. Weinstein.
Yes.
Then we're going to vote SAO 8 as amended.
Ms. Siggety.
Yes.
Dr. Ball.
Yes.
Mr. Fox.
Yes.
Ms. Tarassa.
Yes.
Mr. Weinstein.
Yes.
Council Bill 4, 2015, amending certain definitions and generally relating to human rights in Howard County.
Move approval of Council Bill 4, 2015.
Second.
Move approval of Amendment 3.
Second.
Amendment 3 removes three references to bringing a cause of action that has not yet occurred.
I will remind everyone that Amendments 1 and 2 are already attached to this bill. We heard them in public hearing the last time, the last public hearing we had. So let's vote Amendment 3.
Ms. Siggety.
Yes.
Dr. Ball.
Yes.
Mr. Fox.
Yes.
Ms. Tarassa.
Yes.
Mr. Weinstein.
Yes.
And then let's vote Council Bill 4 as amended.
Ms. Siggety.
Yes.
Dr. Ball.
Yes.
Mr. Fox.
Yes.
Ms. Tarassa.
Yes.
Mr. Weinstein.
Yes.
Council Bill 14, 2015, approving a multi-year installment purchase agreement to acquire development rights in approximately 50.12 acres of agricultural land located at Winstead Road, Woodstock.
Oh, move to approve? We have, so, move to approve Council Bill 14, 2015.
Second.
This one was one that had, we had held on the, no, this is different. I'm getting them confused. I apologize.
Ms. Siggety.
Yes.
Dr. Ball.
Yes.
Mr. Fox.
Yes.
Ms. Tarassa.
Yes.
Mr. Weinstein.
Yes.
Council Bill 15, 2015, requiring certain recycling services for certain special events.
Move approval of Council Bill 15, 2015.
Second.
Ms. Siggety.
Yes.
Dr. Ball.
Yes.
Mr. Fox.
Yes.
Ms. Tarassa.
Yes.
Mr. Weinstein.
Yes.
Council Resolution 40, 2015, approving a comprehensive revision of the solid waste management plan.
Move approval of Council Resolution 40, 2015.
Second.
Ms. Siggety.
Yes.
Dr. Ball.
Yes.
Mr. Fox.
Yes.
Ms. Tarassa.
Yes.
Mr. Weinstein.
Yes.
Council Resolution 41, designating the Department of Police as the primary law enforcement unit for Howard County for the purpose of receiving records from secondhand precious metal dealers and pawnbrokers.
Move approval of Council Resolution 41, 2015.
Second.
Move approval of Amendment 1.
Second.
Ms. Seager.
Amendment 1 adds reference to automated purchasing machine reports. State law also requires that the Department of Police be designated as the recipient of records of sales made on automated purchasing machines. Okay.
So we will vote Amendment 1.
Ms. Siggety.
Yes.
Dr. Ball.
Yes.
Mr. Fox.
Yes.
Ms. Tarassa.
Recuse.
Mr. Weinstein.
Yes.
Then we will vote Council Resolution 41 as amended.
Ms. Siggety.
Yes.
Dr. Ball.
Yes.
Mr. Fox.
Yes.
Ms. Tarassa.
Recuse.
Mr. Weinstein.
Yes.
Council Resolution 42, 2015, approving the application and receipt of financing for a community legacy project.
Move approval of Council Resolution 42, 2015.
Second.
Ms. Siggety.
Yes.
Dr. Ball.
Yes.
Mr. Fox.
Yes.
Ms. Tarassa.
Yes.
Mr. Weinstein.
Yes.
Council Resolution 43, 2015, adopting Howard County's annual action plan for housing and community services.
Move approval of Council Resolution 43, 2015.
Second.
Move approval of Amendment 1.
Second.
Ms. Seager.
Amendment 1 corrects the dollar amount in the housing initiative program, and corrects the name of the home project, and corrects funding in the CDBG amount for eviction prevention programs.
All right, any questions on those for Ms. Seager?
Ms. Siggety.
Yes.
Dr. Ball.
Yes.
Mr. Fox.
Yes.
Ms. Tarassa.
Yes.
Mr. Weinstein.
Yes.
So then we are going to vote Council Resolution 43 as amended, please.
Ms. Siggety.
Yes.
Dr. Ball.
Yes.
Mr. Fox.
Yes.
Ms. Tarassa.
Yes.
Mr. Weinstein.
Yes.
Council Resolution 87, 2015, introduced by the chairperson... Council Resolution 87, 2015, introduced by the Chairperson, a resolution calling the County Council of Howard County, Maryland into legislative session on May 22, 2015, May 26, 2015, and May 28, 2015.
Move approval of Council Resolution 87.
Second.
Ms. Siggety.
Yes.
Dr. Ball.
Yes.
Mr. Fox.
Yes.
Ms. Tarassa.
Yes.
Mr. Weinstein.
Yes.
Colleagues, we have many things on the table. I wanted to try to bring them off the table and resolve them. So move to remove Council Resolution 80, 2014, from the table.
Second.
Ms. Siggety.
Yes.
Dr. Ball.
Yes.
Mr. Fox.
Yes.
Ms. Tarassa.
Yes.
Mr. Weinstein.
Yes.
Council Resolution 80, 2014, confirming the reappointment of William E. Erskine to the Board of Directors of the Economic Development Authority.
Move approval of Council Resolution 80, 2014.
Second.
Ms. Siggety.
Yes.
Dr. Ball.
Yes.
Mr. Fox.
It's funny, it's coming off, coming off tonight as something else is introduced tonight, which makes me feel a little bit more comfortable. I was concerned that, you know, we should have a number of more, you know, business folks that, you know, have commercial operations or, you know, industrial and stuff. And, you know, we had, I think, three land use attorneys, I believe, you know, on there. And I think reapproving before I would have been much less comfortable with. However, with another land use attorney's term up and looking like it was filed tonight for replacement by somebody who's not a land use attorney, I am going to vote yes.
Ms. Tarassa.
Yes.
Mr. Weinstein.
Yes.
Move, move to, move to remove Council Bill 8, 2015, from the table.
Second.
Ms. Siggety.
Yes.
Dr. Ball.
Yes.
Mr. Fox.
Yes.
Ms. Tarassa.
Yes.
Mr. Weinstein.
Yes. Move approval of Council Bill 8. Second.
It's your amendment. Do you want to move your amendment?
Oh, yes, sorry, I'm sorry. I forgot, we went this way now, so. Move approval of Amendment 1.
I'll second it for discussion.
And with that, based off, based off of discussion that was had at the work session on Thursday, which is unfortunately delayed from Monday to Thursday, I would like to move Amendment 1 to Amendment 1.
And I'll second that for discussion.
All right. I've passed that out to the council members and.
You're going to need to go through it with us.
I will go through it with you. So I've passed out.
We have two amendments here.
No, there's only one amendment.
Okay, what's the other one?
The amendment is the one pager, and the other was the original amendment, so I could show where the words came out and were put in, since I figured it would be easier to look at it that way as well. So in the, in the description, title of the bill, it removes by a certain date, which is referencing to later moving Section 2, which had the requirement for having a protocol system magnetometer in this building by the end of '17. So that section will come out, which is referenced there on page 2, you know, strike in their entirety lines 26 to 29. So that's where, if you go to the second page, you see that disappear in Section 2, down at the bottom and the top of page 3. So that's, that reference is then gone with the amendment.
You're saying, Mr. Fox, what you're saying is that in Amendment 1 to Amendment 1?
Yep.
In line 14, it says on page 2 of Amendment 1, strike in their entirety line 26 through 29. So we go back to the amendment itself and look at lines 29.
The pages or page numbers may be, are a little different.
Oh, and the line numbers are different.
The line numbers are different, so don't, that's why I'm just saying that section, because it's easier to see it that way, because I've got my track changes on here, so.
Okay, so to understand what this means, you have to take that one in comparison to the one that's in the book.
That's why I was trying, you don't, yeah, but that's why I was trying to make it so it doesn't, shouldn't matter.
We're working off amending the amendment.
That's exactly right. It's all, you understand what I'm saying, Mr. Weinstein?
I, I believe I do, but I will ask if you wouldn't mind just clarifying the first.
Mr. Weinstein, is your mic on?
It is not on.
Looks better that way.
There. Okay, here we go. So if you wouldn't mind, just start, starting from the top and oriented to the pages now. So page 1.
So page, page 1, so if you want, if you're looking at the actual Amendment to Amendment 1, the one pager?
Yep.
What it's referring to there at the top is basically taking out on the original amendment, the words "by a certain date." And what that is meaning is because, that's coming out because I'm getting rid of that Section 2, which is referenced later.
Okay.
Okay, that was due to the concerns that were stated by Chief Gardner and I think some of the others over, there could be other ways to do it, and the timing aspect of it. So, so that was to address that concern and leave it a little bit more open. And then the other concern that I heard was, one of the reasons that we needed to have this bill is because if without it, we wouldn't have the ability to, when we were having meetings, you know, just under those circumstances, be able to ban. So we just needed to make that ban all the time. And one of the things that was referenced also is other means, for example, that Chief Gardner had given me, was it could be one, another security protocol that could be done on a temporary basis. And so theoretically, if you were, the concern that was stated there in our work session was during, you know, council meetings, we didn't have that ability to do it. So during those periods of times, if you have the security protocol out there that would be temporary, that may not be at the same cost as far as both personnel and equipment, you would then be able to, during that time, be able to have the restrictions on, you know, the further restrictions as stated previously, without having something permanent in place. And so that goes to the, I think that was, until you got down to D on the exemption, and that's where, under D, under the exemption, he had, the way we ended up writing it was striking the other section and rewriting it. But in reality, the only thing that changed was that in front of magnetometer, it was permanent. And then after, or equivalent, security protocol, it was as determined by the Howard County Police Department, or during times, a temporary security protocol is determined by the Howard County Police Department is in effect. So that accomplishes the concern and provides the legal ability at that point to do, to handle the concerns and do it in a cost-effective manner that were the, some of the concerns that were stated. And that's it. Very simple.
If you want.
Yeah, if there are any questions.
Yeah, it's page 2, there's on Amendment 1 to Amendment 1, line 14, we're striking 26 through 29.
Yes. And so what that is, is because of the track changes, the page numbers shift down. So that's Section 2. It's already, you see where I have it crossed out?
You see it's crossed out.
It's all crossed out. Got it?
Yep.
Trying to make it as simple as I could.
Very simple.
And page 3.
That's the renumbering.
We just renumbered 3.
So this says that the Howard County Police Department can determine whenever they want that guns are banned.
No, if the, that the protocol that's being used, so that they're determining that that's a, that they're determining the protocol, rather than getting into, you know, detailed additional regulations and such. So they've, it's determined by them. But I believe at that point, it ends up addressing most of the concerns that I heard stated publicly over the issue of, you know, not having a way to secure the premises when people were having things banned, when Annapolis kept being referred to in the examples of, well, you can't bring them in, you know, there. And so that's why it originally gone as strong as I went. There was concerns over how strong I went and concerns over if we had nothing, that you wouldn't be able to ban it during certain times, you know, that we would want it. So now you have a, the ability, under the way that this is amended, to do it at times that we deem necessary.
Deem necessary. Where's that?
Well, I mean, you've got, you've got, you know, the ability. So if we wanted to, to, you know, say that we wanted that level of, you know, as a council or whatever, we were concerned during those times, that we wanted to be able to do it, then, you know, make requests, work with the administration, the police department, whatever. I'm perfectly fine with that.
So you don't have a problem with them banning guns as long as, with guns being banned here, as long as the police make the determination on us?
No, I'm saying as long as there's a security protocol that's not allowing other weapons into the facility during those times, which was the whole rationale that was being stated, you can't do it in Annapolis. But, yeah, you can do it in every other state, state of Maryland building, other than places where you have that security protocol. So just being consistent with how it is elsewhere in the state, as far as that goes. I mean, not seeing where it's banned this way in, in other counties. I mean, not from what I was able to determine. We'd be the first, I think we may be the first one. I know we like to be first on things.
Any questions from, any more questions?
I am formulating a question.
Okay.
Go for it. So, so you're suggesting then that guns are generally, they are, they continue to be permitted except in circumstances where, where either security measures are in place or the police determine, no?
No. That, that, that security measures are in place. The problem is, we, you know, as far as in, you know, really in determining them, I think that's our best route of determining the protocols. So it's if there are permanent or temporary measures in place. So if we're having council meetings, like I think Council Chairman Siggety had mentioned, you know, we don't have the ability to do this, you know, we have a council meeting, and that we needed to have something like that, this law, to be able to do it. And so it seems like, okay, to accomplish what she was talking about in the work session, we're basically doing it carte blanche. And what I'm, what I'm doing by this is, if we determine in certain areas it needs to be done carte blanche, and the costs, it makes sense and everything else, and it's able to be done, that's fine. You know, if you put the security protocol in place. But if we have to have it for temporary reasons, or, you know, for, you know, for certain events, or for certain types of sessions, or a certain location, or we're having a problem in community, whatever it might be, you can always establish that we need to have something there temporarily to be there. And whether that's a temporary piece of equipment, or if that's mobile pieces of equipment, or whatever is determined to be sufficient to, to handle not having folks bring in, you know, other, you know, other weapons, guns, whatever it might be.
Right.
That, at that point, the comfort level is, is there, at least, I don't know, not, doesn't solve everybody's concern, as we heard. You know, but I think it covers at least 90-plus percent of people's concerns at that point, that we're concerned about not being able to bring something in and have others who may not be law-abiding bring something in. So it's trying to, to do it, doing it cost-effective, give the flexibility and addressing, trying to address the various concerns that I've heard throughout this whole thing.
And so in terms of efficiency or in a practical matter, that at any given, on any given day, a person who might have a carry permit, they may not know whether or not their weapon is, they're able to carry their weapon in a building.
They may have, they may have to if we have something going on, so we have session and we've, and we hadn't, you know, they didn't get notice or whatever, they may have to go back out, you know, and secure it elsewhere. But yes.
One, one concern I don't see that is addressed that we did raise was the issue of the training of individuals who do have a carry permit and their lack of training to deal with situations of potential risk that we're, we're trying to address by not having weapons in the building in the first place.
You could have, you know, here's what I would say, I mean, also, there's, there's plenty of examples that go both ways.
Right.
With, with that, you know, I think that there are more, you know, at least from what I could, you know, find, I wasn't going to get into it.
Sure.
I was told to stay away from too much, I'm always on my numbers, but I, the amount of stats stuff I actually have back there in my, or actually, I guess it's in the, the office, and my, my, my backpack is a little off the charts on this stuff, but the, the numbers, you know, I think more show that, you know, there's not a lot of the incidental versus where people, gun or no gun, got, getting involved. Because the whole thing, when you're talking about is whether you have a gun, a knife, your hands, you know, whatever it might be, to intervene, that is always a risk of, of somebody potentially intervening. That doesn't stop it whether they have a gun or not. And there's plenty of situations, there are more situations where those actions by individuals have stopped crimes than there is of those folks, you know, having a fatal issue as a result of being involved.
Okay.
And, you know, if you would like me to, to provide you that level of detail, I'd be more than happy to.
I don't think we need that.
Just checking.
I think we had the opportunity at our work session to talk about that, so we appreciate that you're will, that you're willing to offer it yet again. Thank you.
Any other questions, Mr. Weinstein?
No, Mr. Fox, thank you very much.
All right. Are we ready? You ready?
Any other questions?
We are voting Amendment 1 to Amendment 1. So we are voting Amendment 1 to Amendment 1.
Ms. Siggety.
Well, I'm going to vote no.
Dr. Ball.
Yes.
You even thought about it, wow.
Mr. Fox. Mr. Fox?
Yes.
Ms. Tarassa?
No.
Mr. Weinstein?
So now we are going to vote Amendment one as amended.
Ms. Siggety?
No.
Dr. Ball?
No.
Mr. Fox?
It wasn't amended.
It was, it was three to two.
Who's the third?
Me.
Weinstein, yes.
I get to vote two?
Who's the third?
Me.
God, I missed that. Oh, jeez, I was like looking over here, I missed it. It was like, I got John's, I missed yours.
I was paying attention, Mr. Fox.
Wow.
It's my job.
I'm in shock, but, you know, okay, all right.
Mr. Fox?
Yes.
Ms. Tarassa?
No.
Mr. Weinstein?
So then we move approval...
Move to table.
I'll second it for a vote.
Okay.
Ms. Siggety?
No.
Dr. Ball?
No.
Mr. Fox?
Yes.
Ms. Tarassa?
No.
Mr. Weinstein?
Yes, I'd like to move approval of Amendment two. And the, the simple version here is this just goes to address some potential gaps for allowing people with other legitimate reasons that we missed that weren't covered, specifically areas in museum-related roles, and we have the, the museum down the street here that has antique weapons, and then also for training purposes and demonstration purposes for education, so those are a couple of areas that are covered by the, this amendment.
Any other que, any questions?
Ms. Siggety?
Yes.
Dr. Ball?
Yes.
Mr. Fox?
No.
Ms. Tarassa?
Yes.
Mr. Weinstein?
Yes.
So we're then going to vote Council Bill eight as amended.
Ms. Siggety?
Yes.
Dr. Ball?
Yes.
Mr. Fox?
No, I meant to, actually, I was fine with your amendment, but that's fine.
I thought it was odd, because your name is on it.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
You know where your heart is on that.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm still focused on the other stuff, I was like...
Thrown by Mr. Ball.
Yes, actually.
Vote for it.
Glad I can still surprise you after all these years.
Did you vote, Mr. Fox?
I did vote no, but, and I'm not gonna worry about doing the reconsidering, the other ones, not, doesn't matter to me on this one that much.
I hadn't heard you, that's all.
That's fine.
Ms. Tarassa?
Yes.
Mr. Weinstein?
Okay, move to remove Council Bill twelve, two thousand fifteen, from the table.
Second.
Ms. Siggety?
Yes.
Dr. Ball?
Yes.
Mr. Fox?
Yes.
Ms. Tarassa?
Yes.
Mr. Weinstein?
Yes.
Council Bill twelve, twenty fifteen, approving a multi-year installment purchase agreement to acquire development rights in approximately one hundred sixty-seven point eighty-two acres of agricultural land located at fifteen, three twenty-five Leandina Drive, Glenwood.
Ms. Feldmark, we were waiting on information to determine whether or not we could move to approve this, there was some outstanding issue with it?
Right, I believe they were waiting that that might have been cleared up today, but my understanding is it was not. Yeah, and it can be cleared up fairly quickly, which is why we're asking for it to be placed back on the table.
Okay, all righty. But because we've put it on the table once, we have to extend its life, so move to extend the life of Council Bill twelve, two thousand fifteen. I don't know with a move to extend, you know, I guess, sure. You know, you, you get me into trouble.
Well, you point of problem, I can always ask, point of, whatever, point of problem. So, this is, I guess, the first time that we're moving to extend the life under, now that we have the, the longer period of time that we can extend it, do we have to specify whether we're extending it under the normal period of time, like we used to?
We used to for thirty days.
Or the extended period, or is just extending it now, give it all that additional time?
It's still the same amount of time, thirty days, and you can, you can do two thirty-day extensions, you can do them separately, so this is really, as I, as I understand the motion, it's a move, or it's a motion to extend the life of the bill by thirty days.
Okay, I, I don't see the thirty days, so, and that's why I'm asking the question, since...
Would you like me to?
No, I'm just asking, just, not because I care about this particular time, it's just our first time that we've been there, and just so, from a precedent standpoint, I want to make sure that we're doing it that way.
If we all understand that extending the life is to extend it for thirty days, and we have the ability to do it twice, we, that's right, and we can get into our rules of procedure and write those, write that out clearly, since we've changed it in the future, on a, on a dull month.
I hear you.
Not this one, thank you.
They may never happen.
You have one of those coming up?
They may never happen.
Yeah, in August.
Exactly, in August. So we are voting then to extend the life of this bill for thirty days.
Ms. Siggety?
Yes.
Dr. Ball?
Yes.
Mr. Fox?
Yes.
Ms. Tarassa?
Yes.
Mr. Weinstein?
Yes.
So then we're gonna move to table, Council Bill twelve, twenty fifteen.
Second.
Ms. Siggety?
Yes.
Dr. Ball?
Yes.
Mr. Fox?
Yes.
Ms. Tarassa?
Yes.
Mr. Weinstein?
Yes.
So then we're gonna move to remove Council Bill thirteen, twenty fifteen, from the table.
Second.
Ms. Siggety?
Yes.
Dr. Ball?
Yes.
Mr. Fox?
Yes.
Ms. Tarassa?
Yes.
Mr. Weinstein?
Yes.
Council Bill thirteen, twenty fifteen, approving a multi-year master services agreement between Howard County and Automatic Data Processing, Inc.
Move to approve Council Bill thirteen, twenty fifteen.
Second.
Ms. Siggety?
Yes.
Dr. Ball?
Yes.
Mr. Fox?
Yes.
Ms. Tarassa?
Yes.